I'd like to call this meeting with Westland City Council to order. We begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Melissa Sampe.
.......................................
Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call.
Councilwoman Bowman, Ms. Absinthe Fues, Councilwoman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilwoman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Temerkowski, present. Councilwoman Sampe.
Here.
President Hurd.
Here.
Miss President.
Thank you. We'll begin with special presentations and announcements. We'll begin with Wayne Westland School District in partnership with us in the Compassionate City Program.
Good evening, and thank you very much. We are here this evening to present three students from Wayne Westland Community Schools for what's called the Compassion Project, which is a partnership between Wayne Westland Community Schools and the city of Westland. So our first student that's going to come up is from Edison Elementary School, and that is Liam Bejarano.
Quite the entourage.
Come on up, Liam. And for Liam, this is a surprise for Liam. He did not know he was coming up today, so we're so excited. But Liam, you are being nominated, or you're being recognized today because you were nominated by your school for a random act of kindness, and your random act of kindness was surprising your teacher with her favorite candy. That is so nice. We all gave him a round of applause.
I still remember her favorite candy right now.
What is it?
Nerd.
And then I'm going to give the mic over to Mr. Beebe for our next student.
All right, thank you. You can stay. You can stay. Our second student is from Elliott Elementary, and the student is Sophia Bell Esparza. Come on up. And she's accompanied by Mrs. Darcy, I'm sorry, Erin Darcy, psychologist. And her act of kindness, Sophia's random act of kindness, was helping out in the lunchroom at her elementary school. So let's give her a round of applause. All right, so our third person from Hicks Elementary, we're going to ask Angel Payne to come up. Come on down, Angel. Angel is accompanied by her teacher, Mrs. Alexis Jock. Jocks. And Angel's random act of kindness is having a willingness to always help her classmates. So let's give her a round of applause also. I'm going to give her that.
Okay, and I believe at this time, we will have certificates presented by our Westland City Council.
And the mayor and the clerk.
The mayor and our clerk.
How come I don't get any entrance applause like them? I know, right? Angel, this is for you?
Turn to the right, Liam, so everybody can see.
And on three.
Let's get my voice.
And on three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right, one more time, let's hear it for the kids. Yep. So at this time, if you want the photos, you go out to the lobby there, they're going to make you Facebook famous and put you up on the webs there. So all your friends can see how awesome you are. Right. And we'll give them a moment to get their stuff together. All right, next for special presentations and announcements, we have Miriam Katie.
Miriam.
Everybody applaud for Miriam, too. Come on.
I bet you can't guess why I'm here, right? Thank you so much for having me. My name is Miriam Katie. I am part of the lead team for... Oh, I'm not talking?
You're on.
Okay, I thought I was. So anyway, I'm part of the lead team for Relay for Life, Western Wayne County, and I am here because I'm so excited to talk about our Pizza Palooza that was on November 14th, and we are just, we're just blown away and overwhelmed by the participation. So our drumroll is, we raised $4,168. I mean, that is like, you know, so, so much higher than we've, we've ever done. So we're just amazed, and it was standing room only, so that's a good thing, right? So I want to do a special, just to mention all of our amazing pizza vendors. Hungry Howie's, Slice of the Eighties from Livonia, Vizzi's Pizza Palace, Happy's Pizza, Manja, Papa John's, Termina's on Wayne Road, Luigi's, Valentino's, and Pizza Cat. So our first, or should I go, I'll go third. So our third runner-up was Manja's, and our second runner-up, Pizza Cat, which is new to our community, and number one was our Vizzi's. So we were very, they deserved that. So we thank them so much, and just for participating, it's, it's pretty amazing. And I want to thank so many of you up there that attended and behind me, so many out there that really came. I want to mention quickly our lead team. It's not just a party of one, you know, it's Carol is our chair, Neelis, and Kathy Graham, Rhonda Graham, Kathleen Russell, Mary Hazel, Jill Lizutkates, Ashley Tetrow, Debbie Gutz, and then some of our other volunteers, oh my God, so amazing, Charlie, Keith, Officer Margie Kelly, she stepped up, she was there to have fun, and she saw how busy we were, so she got out there and helped us, Angie, AJ, Kim, and Madison. And of course, we can't forget our amazing W O N D, and Kyle Parks and Rec, thank you so much for stepping up. He helped us set up more tables and everything. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, and we can't wait till next year and kicking off our 2024 year. So this was our first big, big fundraiser, and I just want to say thank you so much. And just quickly, tomorrow for the holiday celebration, we're trying something, introducing something new, Love Lights, A Tree, our ornament, so come see us at our table. Thank you once again, we're very blessed. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, now we move to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda today. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Is there anybody on my right? Is there anybody on my left? All right, we'll close, input on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg, supported from Councilman Godbout. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of regular meeting held November 20, 2023. Approval of requests from Relay for Life to waive the administrative city hall rental fee to hold their first lap kickoff event on Saturday, January 6, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Farmers and Artisans Market Pavilion. Rental fee of $240 for a nonprofit package deal is waived. Approval of requests from Relay for Life to waive the administrative city hall rental fee to hold their February kickoff event on Tuesday, February 6, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. in the city hall ballrooms. Rental fee of $375 for a nonprofit package deal is waived. Traffic control order 2023-11, install multiple no parking signs on the west side of Wildwood just north of the Edison Elementary Bus cutout all the way to Stacy. Introduction of budget amendments through October 31, 2023, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024. Introduction of manpower budget amendment for the fiscal year 2024. Current status as of January 1, 2024 is 29 firefighters. Proposed change, increase to a total of 42 firefighters. Effective date of proposed amendment, January 1, 2024. Adoption of prepared land division 7300 North Merriman, east side of Merriman, north of Warren, plan division number 1199D. This land division was approved by city council on November 6, 2023. Approval of schedule of regular meetings of the Westland City Council for the 2024 calendar year. Moving to payment of voucher.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampe, supported from Councilwoman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Moving to new business. New business item number one. Confirmation of appointment of Mayor Kevin Coleman as delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority. Appointment to become effective immediately and expire June 30, 2024.
Motion from Councilman Godbout. Support from Pro Temerkowski. Mayor, do you have anything to add? No, thank you, city council. Very good. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New, excuse me, new business item number two. Approval of appointed officials mayor's office and city clerk's office pay plan for the period of January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2025.
Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg. Is there support? Supported from Councilman Godbout. Stephanie, you have anything to add?
No, I thank you for the approval, and this is a two-year pay plan, and there have been no changes to the pay plan, just minor updates for the medical CPI and the hard cap numbers, so minor changes.
Thank you. Anything from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Any discussion? Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes, through the chair to Stephanie, our finance. So in the pay plan, there's no proposed raises for individuals in the two-year agreement? Or are there raises? I was just curious if, because I know that last time we had discussed that there were raises, so is, there's no raises now within the two-year?
So through the chair, it's a Councilwoman Sampe. There is a differential, I don't know what you want to call it, but in the very, on the very first page under one, some, some refer to it as a tie bar to the, I think it's the deputy police chief, so if, if, or when they receive a raise, then that would come down to the directors, yes.
So are we still, we're keeping tie bar in place then, correct?
Yeah, it's, you know, we refer to it as differential, so tie bar differential, that's, you know, the same term as we use, yes.
Okay, and then just one more follow-up. So approved tonight, is this bringing everyone that's 85% up to 100%? Or do they still have to stay at 85%?
So that is one of the changes also proposed, is to eliminate the 85% starting wage for anyone in the pay plan, yes, so.
So they would go immediately up to 100%?
Yeah, when hired, they would start at 100%, yes.
Okay, but do we have anyone at 85% now that would go up to 100 or no?
We do, right now, one person, I do.
Okay, so they would go up to 100%?
Yeah, Alex, yeah, just one, yeah.
Okay, just one, okay. Okay, perfect, yeah, I was just, I just wanted clarity on that, just to make sure that that was in place, because I know it was crossed out, so I didn't know, eliminating, I'm totally fine with that, but I didn't know what the budget implications were for bringing 85 to 100%.
So through the chair to clarify that a little more, so when the budget, budget is prepared in March, everyone's factored in as at 100%, so there would be no budget adjustment in doing this.
Just neutral, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We will now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Where'd he go? Hi, I'm Jason from Jesco's. I was born and raised here in Westland. I'm a minister, a preacher, a watchman in the gates of the city. Anywhere there's sin, I go and preach the word of God and bring forth, you know, things that people don't understand. So some of the things that had happened lately in the city, I noticed that there's a new marijuana dispensary over on Ford Road called Live. I was preaching there a week ago, and there's folks pulling out, you know, doing drugs on the way out of there, and, you know, we have obviously people in our community, children and stuff, and there's folks driving around our community, pulling out of that place intoxicated. Of course, I encourage everybody here, you know, to accept Jesus Christ as Lord and Savior. I brought my Bible. I hope that everybody has one of these, the greatest counsel we can have in our possession. Make it your final authority. I know a lot of people think, well, this guy, he's up here judging and stuff like that, we've got to be careful what we're judging and how we're judging. We need to let God's word judge us first, and then present that to our family, our friends, our, you know, people that we're around. And so because I've been ordained by God, I have to be in the city and watching out for the city, what's coming in and out of our city. Sin has consequences, eternal punishment from God, eternal torment. People are placed in hell, which is something I don't like to say, but the facts are in the book, okay? So those things need to be said and addressed in our city, and I came here to greet the council, obviously, and the citizens, and the new mayor, the new chief of police, some of you guys I may have seen before. We have, I think the last time I was here, they were voting on putting up the LGBT banner, and I noticed most of the council is for that. The part that hurt my feelings was, and I'm sure many others that are Christian, there was no flag being raised in reference to Christianity, there's no Christian flag being raised in the city which would oppose that other flag. So we need to pay attention what we're accepting, what we're condoning, what we're justifying in our city, because that's going to be the outturn of our city morally speaking. You know, there's going to be people living a certain type way in our city, and we want them to have moral uprightness, and that comes through faith in Jesus Christ. If anybody at the council or citizens here today are even watching, you know, don't have any kind of biblical counsel or would like some prayer, you can get ahold of me through, through my email and my address, which you can find through my name. I just want to thank everybody, real quick prayer, if that's okay with you guys.
Do you have 15 seconds?
Heavenly Father, I thank you for the council today, I thank you for all the citizens here in Westland, I thank you, Lord, I ask that you bless them by your grace, your mercy. Lord, help them to understand, open up their understanding by your judgment and your truth, dear Lord God, let it be known that the truth is spoken here today in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Time's up, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I got to enforce the rules. Is there anybody on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening to everybody. I came here tonight, Mayor Coleman, to congratulate you. I wish you all the success in the world. I've have, I'm very confident that you will take care of the issues in the city. I'm not going to go into anything tonight. I just wanted to come and congratulate you and know that you will do a good job, and because there's a lot of issues with the city and corruption, and I really hope that you will take care of those issues and get the city on the right track. So I wish you the best, and thank you so much, and the residents that voted for you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Ms. Wilson.
Good evening, council. I just want to tell Kevin, Mr. Coleman, Mayor Coleman, I'll give you that respect because you deserve it. Thank you very much. You made, you, Mr. Godbout, Glenn Anderson, you gave Ms. Parker a wonderful birthday present for her 100th birthday. Thank you for coming down, and Mr. Coleman, thank you for yesterday in DTE.
All right, is there anybody on my right? Sir?
My name is Patrick Groh. I've been a Westland resident for 27 years. I first off, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Kevin Coleman to his elected position as mayor, and also to Emily Baumann to her elected position as city councilwoman, hope she's watching. Two weeks ago, Mayor, you walked up to that seat for the first time, and I was imagining the thoughts and emotions going through your head, becoming the mayor of the city, and then taking on the responsibility of managing a big city. I'd like to share a quick story. My wife and I homeschooled our children. In our home, we had a huge poster, and on that poster was a little boy, four or five years old. He had a baseball cap, a baseball cap hat on, and he had it sideways so he could see out. He was holding a Major League Baseball bat, he was holding a mitt in one hand and a ball, and the poster read, "Every great player was once a beginner." Mayor, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution. We, the people, took a pledge of allegiance to the, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The word indivisible means undivided, incapable of division. So whether this is the first time coming to this podium and speaking, whether it's the first time pulling that chair out and sitting in that chair, or the first time for a council member to pull out their chair, or for a council member that pulls it out for the 100th time. If we all remember that we are one nation under God, we will be undivided. We will be incapable of ongoing division. Mayor, I pray that God would bless you and your administration. I pray that God would bless the city council, and I pray that God would bless the city of Westland. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? All right, anybody else in the audience? Mary, I didn't see your hand. I'll get you next, Ray. Mary, when you're in the back, you've got to raise your hand really high.
I know I already hit it true at the beginning, but I just want to say thank you so much for allowing us to waive those fees again. The, you know, the city's always been so supportive, and we, it just means a lot to us. I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Ray, it's all yours.
It's always good, now I take notes, too. So anyway, hi, everybody, everyone's doing good. I was, I took some notes here, Toys R' Tots for Myers. I helped out the Westland Police Department, and I loved it, and I think it's great, and they had quite a bit of toys, hopefully, for Myers. Then we went down to Jefferson Barnes, but I think it was good and fun, too. But I just wanted to say one thing. For people with disabilities, involving people with disabilities in the decision-making and leadership roles in only way real and full disability inclusion occurs. That means inclusion, diversity, and all. And here's another celebration, International Day, persons with disabilities, December 3rd, I think it's great. I'm the chairperson of the Disability Acquacy, and I'm on the movement of that. And also with Jefferson Barnes, it was fun, but a lot of times, let's move this rug, and we throw respects underneath it, we need to lift that rug up, and it doesn't matter, bottom lines, all people with, volunteers need to be trained, too, and I agree. I don't want to thank Jefferson Barnes for listening to me, because it's important, because it's not this me, it happens to some other people. So what I'm talking about is respect, you know, when they're in one of these moods, you know, if you want to get your picture taken with Santa Claus, actually, why not? know, if you want to get your picture taken with Santa Claus, actually, why not? Anybody with different ages, I think it's fun. So next year, I'm going to, I'm planning on bringing some people up there, because everybody has the right, should be treated with dignity and respect. We are not into the 70s anymore. Everyone should be treated with dignity and respect, and I'm really big about that, because what I tell people, what comes around goes around. It could be your son, your daughter in that situation. I want to say thank you.
Thanks, Ray. All right, anybody else in the audience wants to come after Ray? Sir?
Edward Pruitt here. Thankful to be able to stand before you. There's two areas that I wanted to speak on tonight. I'm thinking about it from a community advocacy standpoint, and two areas that have been, or initiatives that have been started to be pushed forward are, were very good for the community. The first one, which I was extremely ecstatic about, which, but became disappointed because it didn't go through, was for the city council to try to move the time around for the 18th. We know that our school system is going through an unprecedented time. Fox 2 reported that they had a $28 million shortfall, overspending, and now there are some significant moves that are happening that are causing concerns to students, parents, It's very heartbreaking to see this in our city. And when I heard that there was a move to try to adjust the time for the city council meeting, I jumped for joy because it would have demonstrated, at least from two of the council members who have signed, who signed on to it, that they were willing to put their words and actions together. I understand that some of the reasons behind it was that they didn't, that you all didn't want to make an unprecedented, make a precedent for moving the meetings, but when are we going to have another $28 million shortfall where people need support? This is one of those times. I hope we never have it again. So I'm very concerned with the fact that more people who say they support community members did not join in to truly demonstrate even an hour move. The second piece that I want to mention is recorded study sessions. For so long, community members have asked for recorded study sessions. It gives greater accessibility. It gives greater involvement. People with disabilities, people with conflicting schedules, family time, different things, it gives them a greater ability to participate within our government. It's for the people, by the people, and we want to have it with the people. I'm thankful that there is an initiative going forward right now to try to get that put in place. I truly hope that goes in place, because that is standing for the people. That is standing for a just cause and to make sure that the people are included. I believe that any vote against it is a vote against the people and saying, I don't want to hear you, I don't want you to be involved. So thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right, we'll close public comment and move the comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here, to the people with the kind words for me, wishing me luck and saying prayers for me. I really appreciate that. It really means a lot to me. So thank you so much. I'll keep on working very hard. It's, today is three weeks as mayor. We've had a lot of challenges. We've had some bumps, but things are off to a great start. I want to thank our city staff, all my directors, our police department, our fire department, city council. It's been great working with you so far. A couple of things on my list tonight. First, I want to congratulate the compassionate awardees. It's great to see these young people doing nice things for each other and making each other's days brighter at school. So I appreciate the schools doing that. And to the kids that got awards, congratulations. Edna May Parker, 100 years old. She's somebody that could light up a room. I was hoping maybe she'd come by tonight, but I was able to join Councilman Godbout and Commissioner Glenn Anderson and go wish her a happy birthday on her birthday. And so I want to thank Lori Wilson for the invitation. We were able to present her with a nicer certificate from the city, and she was just a joy. And I'm looking forward to coming and visiting her again soon. So that was really nice. So happy birthday, Edna. Miriam, just want to say a great job with Relay, and I don't think I've ever seen the gallery at City Hall so packed for Pizza Palooza. That was really cool. So congratulations for that and everything you're doing. Thank you, city council, for the approval of my appointment to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority. I'll be looking forward to serving on that board. It's something that the mayor typically does, and I appreciate you approving that tonight. Thank you. The holiday season has arrived, and with it comes many great events around the city. I want to invite everybody, it's actually coming up tomorrow, so if you're seeing this on TV, it may be too late, but we've announced it on our Facebook page and our website. But just a reminder for everybody here tonight, we're going to be having our holiday celebration tomorrow right here at City Hall. Doors open at 5:00, and it runs from 5:30 to 7:00. Santa Claus will be here. Kids can get a free picture with Santa Claus. They can tell Santa what they want for Christmas, and there'll be other great activities for the kids. And we've got a beautiful Christmas tree here in the lobby that our senior resources director, Barb Markham, helped decorate along with some city employees. So I appreciate that. There'll also be some cookie and ornament decorating, letters to Santa, and other great things going on there, too. The chamber, the new Livonia Westland Chamber, Dan West and the other employees and folks involved with our chamber have organized the Taste Fest. I know, I understand it was sold out. That's how popular this event is. I'm proud to be a sponsor of the event, and I'll be there tomorrow as well after our holiday celebration. So looking forward to seeing everybody there. A lot of great Westland businesses and restaurants participate and have samples of their food. So it's a cool event. If you didn't get a ticket this year, I would just recommend watching out for it next year. It's a, it's a great event in the city. The Westland Historic Village Park is going to be having Santa Claus there on Saturday. It's Saturday, December 9th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If you don't know where the Historic Village Park is, it's on Wayne Road, just south of Marquette, and it's on the west side of the road. You'll see the old historic buildings there right along Wayne Road. Something I've told some people in town is, as mayor, I want to do some more programming over there. I think it's kind of an untapped resource. The historic committee does a great job, but I want to assist them and do even more there. So I don't know if I'll be able to make it myself, but to the community, you know, you can go over there at 11:00 AM on Saturday. There'll be hot cocoa cookies. The Grinch is apparently going to show up, so watch out for him, and that should be a good time. So that'll be cool. This is the last week for curbside compost pickup, so if you still have any bagged leaves or bagged compost, get it on the curb right away so the city can pick it up. And then just a note about leaf pickup. So I became mayor a few weeks ago. Day one, we talked about leaf pickup. We revised the schedule a bit so the contractors could get up to speed. Last week, we revised the schedule again, and then a few days ago, I put out on Facebook that everything for the first round would be done by yesterday. Unfortunately, it was not. And the issue was, is the contractors that were hired by the previous administration were unable to keep pace on schedule. And I know there's a lot of frustration out there, because what good is a schedule if you can't stay on schedule? So this is a learning experience for the city as far as bringing back the leaf pickup program, but it's also a bit of a frustration for a lot of people, especially people in Zone 1, I know. And I'll tell you something, actually, on Friday night, I drove around myself throughout the city, Saturday afternoon, and then Sunday night, last night, I drove around taking notes. I was in all corners of the city myself, just taking a look to see what the streets looked like. Some neighborhoods look beautiful. You don't see leaves anywhere. Some neighborhoods are really messy. Okay, so we're looking deeply at this, and what we're going to do from now on is just get your leaves out on the curb, and we're going to get them picked up. If you feel that, and I'll tell you something, Zone 1 should be done within a couple of days now, and I've been saying that every couple of days for, for about a week. But what DPS is telling me and what our contractors are telling me, that's going to be done within a couple of days this week, should be by Wednesday at the latest. If it isn't, give me a call. I'll give you my number in a minute. But, you know, I looked at this, and, you know, we can't change horses midstream. We're in the middle of this program. We're getting into winter. We've had one snow already, so I'm just pushing them to tell them, get those leaves picked up as fast as you can. So get your leaves out, whether they're bagged or just on the curb, and we're going to get them picked up right away. This is something I had to pick up and just keep running with as, as our new mayor. But I understand there's frustration, and I completely understand that. I've seen leaves out in my neighborhood, too. Our phone number in my office, if you want to give us your address so we can double-check your street, 734-467-3200. And our email address in my office is mayor@cityofwestland.com. So please just be in communication with us. I see some people are putting comments on Facebook. I would encourage you to call the office, though. We are monitoring the Facebook, but it'll be more efficient if you could just give us a call. You shouldn't have to do that, but unfortunately, with the way the schedule worked out, the contractors just weren't staying on schedule, and it's been a disappointment. So my apologies. We'll get your leaves picked up right away. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the city attorney today?
Nothing, Mr. Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll begin council comments with Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. Just real quick, I wanted to thank the people that came out last week for the Westland Community Foundation Toy Drive. It was a big success. People brought toys and donated cash. Those that didn't bring toys, so it was much appreciated. And I'd like to give a special thanks to the Westland Fire Department, who once again came through with a significant amount of toys to help out the Salvation Army in this, in this annual toy drive. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. I hope everyone's doing well and having a really busy holiday season. I wanted to congratulate the students as well, Liam, Sophia, and Angel. They always remind us to be kind, so I really love this meeting. Personally, I've been busy, so today I met with the mayor and some of our public safety leadership at Team Wellness in Westland. Pretty exciting. I've always been a big advocate of mental health, but they're in the beginning stages of rolling out a crisis intervention center, so more information to come, but they really are working on something that's going to be pretty beneficial to our community. So again, I wanted to share that as something that will be happening. It looks like, you know, based on communication, that it will be mid-January before they're ready, but it really will be a good resource here in the community. I have also been speaking with my colleagues, vocalizing my support on study sessions being videotaped. A lot of residents have mentioned it to me. They had asked me, you know, is there a way for us to attend study sessions? And I feel like it could be a great resource for those that can't make it. So potentially, it's a discussion that we could have. It sounds like with new council leadership, it actually hits the leadership decision. Also, working with the mayor and administration on the expansion of the Holiday Park recycling. So thank you, Mayor, for helping with that. I had a resident reach out to me, and they're really looking to possibly pilot something in Holiday Park from a recycling, so it's not dead. We're hopefully working to see if we can roll that out. Also, working with Parks and Rec on some ideas. I know we have a study session next Monday, the 11th, and I am hoping that I can share some ideas and some feedback with them at that study session. Also, shared some leaf pickup program ideas, too, with Mayor. I've been sending them a lot of different things, so hopefully you're not overwhelmed yet. And then also, too, there's quite a bit of residents that have reached out to me on Slumlord issues and how we can better help our residents. So we're kind of bouncing through ideas on that, too, that hopefully I'll be able to share soon. I know that Mayor touched on a lot of different things. I wanted to send a thank you and congratulations to the Norway Community Citizens Council. I was able to attend the event. It was very well attended, so thank you, everyone that sponsored that and supported that event, so it was great to be out there. Look forward to a lot of different events coming up this week, too. I'll be at most of them. Also, wanted to congratulate and thank you to North Brothers Ford. It was actually mentioned on our, on our website, but they just presented our Westland Youth Assistance Program with a check for $10,000. So this money actually came through a gift. They do a lot of charitable events throughout the season, and they donated it back. So just wanted to thank North Brothers Ford for continuing to support that program. It's very worthy. Paul Matz does a fantastic job with those youth that just need a little assistance, so it kind of goes and plays into the name. So just wanted to thank them for that as well. In addition to something that I started personally, I call it Pay It Forward Friday. So I partnered up with Vizies as my first rollout. A lot of families, especially with everything going on in our community, it's, it's that time of the season, but also just people are really uncertain with a lot of different things financially. But I approached Vizies to help me out. Every Friday, I'm, I'm working with a local business to start a campaign. So what I'm doing is I'm sponsoring about $200. We're buying gift certificates, me and my family, for the month of December. We'll see how it goes. And I'm asking for those that want to participate to anonymously, you can call there, or even if you need assistance to retain one of those gift certificates, call them and say, hey, I want one of those gift certificates. So last Friday, we ended up serving 20 families that needed meals. So I wanted to thank Vizies, because they had about 10 Angel donors in addition to donating some pieces themselves. So again, I just wanted to help out the community, support the community. We're going to do this every Friday, working with the business potentially to launch it this Friday as well, too. I have two different options, but again, I just wanted to help out struggling families, calling it Pay It Forward Friday. And I've been just sharing it on Facebook, and I think it's been really well received. Wanted to also remind everyone that our budget session, no, I'm sorry, not a budget session, study session is December 11th. It is going to be here at City Hall, and then the following Monday, December 18th, we invite residents to come out to our last meeting of the year. Can you believe it? The last meeting of the year. That's December 18th at 7:00. So anyone that wants to reach out to me can contact me on my personal Facebook page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. Until then, be kind and safe with each other.
Councilman Hursberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll start right there, because Councilwoman Sampe mentioned that we're having a study session coming up. That's going to be on our parks. You might remember last meeting, we had a lot of discussion on hiring a deputy director and kind of expanding programming, and there was a lot of questions on what exactly we're going to do. So I'm looking forward to talking about that. Our parks director had talked about doing public engagement meetings throughout next year, and I understand he left already, but I did want to mention to council that I hope that these would be council study sessions, because what I would really like to see is that we invite officials from the schools, officials from our local sports organizations, the WIAA, anybody who would have input on new programming or things like that. I think we should really, really involve the right people in the community and sit here as a whole council, not just do a public engagement where we're kind of in and out. I would like us to really, really get moving on this. And then it was mentioned about the recording of study sessions. I do support that. Some cities do actually livestream their regular council meetings, which is helpful, too. And I know during COVID, when we were on Zoom, I would say we had about record participation in our council meetings just from being on Zoom. There were times where we had 70 or 80 people. And they could also do citizens' comments and things like that, so not all of our study sessions are, I don't want to say they're insignificant, but some of them are very brief. Some of them are just updates. So I don't know how exactly that's going to be rolled out, if we're going to pick and choose which ones. Maybe the budget meetings, we can start to record and do it right here in this room. That's about it. It was mentioned about the Wayne Westland Schools meeting on the 18th. It's unfortunate, the situation that's going on over there. This isn't the first time. Actually, when I was a senior in high school, basically the same thing happened, where, oh, there's an accounting error, 17, 20, 28, there's all these different reports of how much, how many millions are missing. The teachers' union did end up going on strike back then. I haven't heard anything about that this year, but I just, I'm not an expert on the school's budget. I don't understand how it happened. I think I said before our meeting here, when we do our budget meetings, we have council members that say, oh, this doesn't add up, this is $10,000 off. We go through the budget. We go through the budget. So for the school district to not, to overlook $20 million, it's really unbelievable. And I do feel like if that did happen at the city level, we would use the surplus. We would be in a deficit for the year. We wouldn't start to lay off 60, 80 people. I mean, it's nuts. I do plan on being there on the 18th to speak on it, so thank you.
Councilman McDermott.
Good evening, and thank you, Council President. You know, I'll start there, too. I have a whole list of notes, but this school district thing has gotten really out of hand. I've had the chance to talk with Steve Kahn and Eric Henze and some of the folks at the Wayne Westland MEA, and I know they're working closely with the Uniserve Director, Tanya Karpinski, because there is an alternative plan that will be, I think, coming forward and to push it back against these cuts, these ridiculous cuts. And more than that, or just as bad as that, is the privatization efforts on the school bus service here in the district. We know, and I shared this on my council page, so if anyone wants to read the report and study that came out from the Washington Post, this was back in 2011, but the record of privatization of government services is horrid. You don't get better service. You don't see the cost savings that are promised upfront. So taking your city services, or in this case, your school district services, the bus drivers, and trying to privatize them out and make everybody have to come back and try to get their job through a private entity has a lousy track record of success when it's been tried at municipal levels, at school district levels, at county, at state, and at federal levels. And so, you know, I certainly, my heart goes out to the bus drivers. It goes out to the teachers and support staff who are facing layoffs. This is not their fault, and they should not pay the price for this mistake and for this error. Now, you know, I'm not going to get in here and delineate what needs to be done as a countermeasure. I'm not on the school board. That's not my place to do. But I do know that the record of privatization of government services is terrible, and that the bus drivers, the teachers, the support staff should not be bearing the brunt of a mistake made that has nothing to do with them, that is not their fault in any way, shape, or form. So to the MEA membership over there to the bus drivers, I am so sorry that you're going through with this, and I will hopefully, after our meeting on the 18th, be down there to support you as well, because this is, this is crazy. And certainly, I don't have children. I know many on this council do have kids, including kids who are in the Wayne Well Sand Schools or who will shortly, in a couple of years, be attending Wayne Well Sand Schools. So I certainly hope for their sake, for every parent and student's sake, for the teacher's sake, that they get this financial mess under control. So certainly thinking of all of you. You may have seen recently in the news that good old DTE got a 7% rate hike. Isn't that wonderful, right? The Michigan Public Service Commission just last week approved a 7% rate increase. It's actually technically 6.67%, I believe, but rounding up, it's a 7% rate increase, which will amount to about a $6.51 per month increase in your electric bill. That's where we all, as elected leaders at every level of government, whether it is us here on your city council, county, or state level of government, have to be diligent in pushing back against DTE and holding the Michigan Public Service Commission to account when they approve these rate increases. You may remember, it's been brought up here before by myself and some other folks, but last year, during their Quarter 4 Wall Street shareholder transcript called DTE, was actually bragging and talking about on their Quarter 4 transcript about deferred maintenance, reducing their contracting workforce, delaying hiring as a measure of cost savings on their part. Well, now they're coming back again, as they've done for pretty much the last decade and a half, asking for another rate increase. They got it, roughly a 7% rate increase. And this is where we have to be diligent in pushing back and holding the Public Service Commission to account. And this is also where I think that we have to start having that conversation regionally here around Metro Detroit about public utilities, just as Ann Arbor is doing. Ann Arbor has a working group. I've had the chance to talk with Greg Wooding, the president of that working group. It's called Ann Arbor for Public Power. I've talked to Mr. Wooding and some of the folks who are on the board at Ann Arbor for Public Power. And I've had the chance to talk with Amy Bandic and Doug Juster at the Michigan Citizens Utility Board, not only about public power, but about what we can do at the local level and what the state can do to better hold our utility companies, DTE consumers, to account and put them in check. So there's quite a bit of work that we have to do. I'm excited going into the new year to have some public dialogue and some public forums on the idea of utility accountability, the bill package that's up there in Lansing, to move that forward, and also on the Public Utility Initiative. We know that public utilities are often cheaper, and they provide a more reliable service with less outages. And when outages do occur, they have a quicker turnaround time. We know this because right in our own backyard, with the city of Wyandotte, with the city of Lansing, and with Traverse City, we have public utilities, which prove more reliable with quicker turnaround times when outages do occur. So lots of work that needs to be done there to push back on DTE and our utilities. I do want to briefly thank our Attorney General Dana Nessel. DTE was originally pushing for a 14-19% rate increase, and I know Attorney General Nessel's office stepped in to really fight back on that. So thank you to Attorney General Nessel and her office to at least decrease the rate of increase there for DTE. Congratulations to our compassionate city kids for all the kind and amazing work that you've done and you put on display each and every time we have you up here. This time to Liam, Sophia, and Angel for your compassionate acts in your schools here in Wayne Westland. A big thank you, I had the chance to go out to the Stuff a Squad Car event. A huge, big thank you to Officer Margie Kelly, Sergeant Brandon Paris, Deputy Chief Rich Coomer, and the entire Westland Police Department for really an amazing job, as always, with the Stuff a Squad Truck, Stuff a Squad Car event. I mean, carts and carts full of toys to benefit the Westland Goodfellas No Child Without a Christmas campaign. Over a dozen carts, I think, full of toys. Thank you not only to the police department, the Goodfellas, for putting this on, but to everybody who stopped by or ran in a mire to buy a toy and come out. I know I saw many of my colleagues there. Councilwoman Sampe was there. Councilman Godbout stopped by. Ray, we saw you there, as always. Every year, Ray, we see you there, so.
I support you.
Thank you to the Westland Police Department. Thank you to the Westland Goodfellas. Thank you to the members of the community who stopped by and made us another huge success. And then this past Saturday, I had the chance to go out and help to gift wrap or put in bags the toys that are going to be distributed out to the families who are sponsored and participated in this event. So thank you to Donna, Heather, Rhonda, and the entire team at the Westland Goodfellas for not only what you did this Saturday, not only what you did with the PD, but for the year-round work that really starts in earnest in August of this year to get this mall rolling. Just a few other things. Thank you to Councilman Godbout and the entire Community Foundation for your work supporting, to support the Salvation Army here in Westland with your toy drive as well, and the Westland Fire Department, who, as Councilman Godbout mentioned, came through with a huge donation of toys. So chief, and everybody in the Fire Department, the union, thank you for that as well. Mayor mentioned the events I was going to talk about, the tree lighting here, the Historic Village event, and then I think that is all I have. One other thing, I did want to thank the administration. Director Adams, thank the city attorney, thank my colleague, Council President Protem Rukowski, for joining me. We did have a meeting to discuss the idea of moving forward with a responsible contractor ordinance. That is something that we've talked about quite often, and Council President Protem Rukowski and I have been working on for over two and a half years, so we hope to have some exciting news to share about a responsible contracting ordinance moving forward. I've posted about that several times on Facebook, and I'm sure we'll have a study session in the future to discuss that, so we can get more information about what that is, why it's a net benefit for you as a taxpayer and for working-class people all across Westland. And with that, I hope to see you all here at the tree lighting tomorrow night. Hope to see you at Taste Fest, and hope you have a great week ahead. And before I get to shopping, then, at Target tonight, I hope it wasn't too long.
Protem Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank Councilman McDermott for working together on the responsible contracting policy. It has been a long time coming. I'm glad to see that we're finally seeing the light at the end of that tunnel, and it is good policy. It's going to be fantastic for the taxpayers, and it's going to be great for our city to make sure things are done right, responsibly, and done correctly and responsibly the first time. And, you know, when we speak of things like schedules, those will be, you know, part of that plan. I enjoyed going to Stuff a Squad Car. I think my son enjoyed it more. He had a lot of fun picking out toys to give to other children, so I think that was just an added blessing of that event. And he enjoyed, you know, seeing his police uncles and aunts. So it was, it was a great time, and it's such a worthy cause, right? We have far too many families in our community that have fallen on hard times, that have a hard enough time paying their mortgage and their utility bills and putting food on the table, that when time comes around to, you know, spread Christmas joy, that, you know, it's a little lean. So anytime we can come together as a community and take, make that burden lighter, it's fantastic. Heard you had a wonderful event, too, and is that still a Dropbox that's available?
Yeah.
Okay, so I was eyeing that Dropbox. So how long is that going to be here?
Till the end of next week.
Okay, so if you've missed some of those opportunities, and, you know, you have some charitable parts of your heart, or you find a good bargain on some toys, there's still a Dropbox here at City Hall. So let's, you know, make sure there's a Christmas for every child in Westland. For a quick update on the ARPA, we're going to have to check our policies and procedures because our charter dictates that we don't have any standing subcommittees. So, you know, as the committee has changed, we'll be leaning on Council President Hart to make a decision of who may be placed on that committee. But that'll be when your next update on that, those dollars and the allocation will be spent. Want to be really cognizant that, you know, the policies and procedures and charter dictates that we don't have a standing committee. And so we sent out some of our ideas already. Some of those things have to change, as obviously we've all been cognizant of the schools' financial situations. So clearly, they're not in a position to be partnering on certain things, but certainly, maybe there's some things that need to be partnered on over in the school district. I want to congratulate Liam, Sophia, and Angel on being exceptional compassionate young people. It's always my favorite council meetings when we get to honor our children for being extraordinary human beings. It gives me a lot of faith in humanity, that these little people just give themselves. And, you know, you realize it's just as easy as getting somebody their favorite candy or helping out in the lunchroom, and I think we can all learn a great deal from that. You know, I didn't realize that the upcoming school board meeting and our meetings were, you know, not even overlapping, just generally at the same time, right? I would make the suggestion to my colleagues that, at the very least, if we suspend our comments on that evening, we can all get out of here and get towards that meeting so we can stand in solidarity with our community. So I would just make that suggestion. And then lastly, I would just like to thank everybody who's reached out with prayers, thoughts, positive words, and kindness for my mother, who had suffered a medical emergency. I'm happy to report that she seems to be in good spirits and is on the mend. We are blessed with skillful surgeons, and hopefully, she will be home with us this week. So, you know, the prayers worked and the positive thoughts and such. If you can just keep them going until I get her home, that'll be my biggest Christmas gift you can give me. So with that, I look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. I hope you enjoy all of the wonderful festivities the city of Westland has to offer you, and we'll see you then. I love you, Mom.
Thank you, thank you. I really have nothing tonight, so thank you, everybody, for coming out, and I thank you to all my colleagues. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.